which is now Astron to supply Eskom.
Yes, I'm saying that we have to support the citizens and make sure that they are not left behind in the company's business.
I think the chair might be aware that there is difficult for HTSA companies who have access to storage facilities all over South Africa.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have to be careful because we are not going to let them go anywhere. We have to be careful because we are not going to let them go anywhere.
Five years ago, Transnet decided to facilitate the entry of black-owned companies to have access to the pet. They have a place called Ambrose Park. I think maybe you are aware of the place, which is here in Durban.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have to be careful because we are not going to let them go anywhere.
The petroleum sector in South Africa is dominated by multinational which are foreign-owned.
Yes, we are not going to let them go anywhere. We have to be careful because we are not going to let them go anywhere.
We approached Transnet with the business case in anticipation that when all the refineries in South Africa, since almost of them are old, will shut down.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not been able to get a response. We have been trying to get a response, but we have not got it.
Then we signed the lease to develop the storage facility because, as I have mentioned earlier on, that the Morana Commission, in its own findings, found out that South Africa is a net importer of oil.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
So we got the necessary permits, like the construction licenses from NERSA, EIA, and so forth. In our surprise, when there was a change in leadership in 2018, our project was subject to forensic investigation, but nothing could not be found.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
Instead of Transnet working with us, they are hostile towards us.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
The project here is supported by the KZ government, even a town municipality there, even included under collective program to first check it since it will create more than 1,500 jobs and then post-construction 1,000. And in terms of revenue, fiscal and so forth, 528 million will be raised through the project.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
The capex for the project is 4 billion. We have already raised money to kick-start the project, but Transnet is frustrating us.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
We are very unhappy because we anticipated that the legally or left all measures will leave South Africa, BP and Shell.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
What will happen? Because we have seen engineers already left. It's just sold to Vitol, which is a trading house like ours.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
So I'm appealing to the chair. I have written to the chair. In fact, I didn't know he was coming. I only heard that he was there and said, "Okay, I'll try and find my way here." To say, "Please intervene because there is a potential risk of fuel supply."
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
Because, as you are aware, the petroleum sector country puts 360 billion per annum.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
And then 30% to the national GDP.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
And then we are the first black-owned company which has issued with a construction license after 29 years since this country got independence.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
Instead of being supported, but we are subjected into hostile attitude by the very same old state enterprise.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
We have been everywhere, publicly protect and national speak of parliament to raise our case, but in too no vain.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
My question is why Transnet is refusing to embrace such huge investment despite the fact that our country is facing economic crisis?
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
Please check your impulse, chair, because our worry is very soon the likelihood of our country, South Africa, to face the shortages of oil is imminent.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
I thank you.
See you, Bongakul.
No, Babusha, you said you wrote to me, "It's fine." There is a lady there called Ayanda Boss. You can just interact with her. I didn't want to stop you because I might frustrate you more than the frustration you have, but don't borrow the same. Please, those one that are coming, don't borrow the same. Next, Baba.
Sanbonan.
Greetings to everyone.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all. Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
I'm happy to see the portfolio committee before me today.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
I'm happy to see the portfolio committee before me today. I'm happy to see the portfolio committee before me today. I extend my greetings to the women in red. Thank you.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
My name is Shabalala. My surname is Shabalala. My English name is Lucky. I'm coming from a place called Danau.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all. Yes, I'm happy to see you all. Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
It doesn't sit well with me, Chairperson, the fact that we are not informed on time when it comes to meeting of this nature. We only find out about them on Facebook, which is a social media that does not sit well with us. We are citizens of this country. However, we want to be told properly in proper platforms as to when these meetings are taking place because we are concerned citizens of this country.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
We are here. We booked a taxi to come here that cost at least about 9,000 just to be present in this meeting. Because we are aware that the portfolio committee is not going to come to Newcastle. It's all right. We may speak.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all. Yes, I'm happy to see you all. Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
We would like to make our contributions, to register contributions to this particular bill. However, we are finding it difficult to do, Chairperson, simply because the offices are located too far from where we live as the residences. And the change in terms of officials is also concerning because when officials are changed or rotated, we are not being informed of those. We just found out recently that there is a new official. However, we met the person on the go. So it's concerning that when officials are being rotated, we should be informed as members of the public.
Okay.
We are going to register it without fear of confrontation, that we stand to reject this bill. We are not going to allow it. We are aware that this bill was proposed, or a bill of this nature was proposed on the previous years by two officials by the name of Molewa and Mr. Mishulus. However, we don't know what was the intention behind it doing. So even if it was not written the same way as it is now by Operation Pakis, however, we don't know what was the reason for them to do that.
Yes, we have been talking about it, but we have not got it.
We are also aware that the DMI stands to regulate in terms of how mining is supposed to operate. So it is unlikely from the part of the Chairperson and the portfolio committee itself that they will oppose or take our views if we say we stand to oppose this particular bill because we know that you are interested in terms of the outcomes of this bill as your role is to regulate but not to take our views as you stand to benefit from this. The manner in which... Thank you, Chair.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
No, it's simple. He's gonna say it in Zulu and then the interpreters, when it's done, will do the English interpretation. Sorry for not doing that.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all. 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 Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
Shingo, I'm happy to see you all. She amati tells what I call there. Who last is so ironed? But don't leave. We must meet with you just after this session.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson. We have two conflicting matters, only two conflicting matters we'd like to begin with. The first one is the conflict, the conflict between two parties, that being the office of the MDR itself and then the multinational company called Shell. Because we don't understand, our understanding is not clear in terms of what are the dealings, how are they communicating amongst themselves? And the communication is not clear when it comes to us as public members as to how Shell is operating and what are the agreements is Shell having with MDR itself? And we are having a difficulty in terms of the communication that is supposed to be extended to us as community members of Newcastle. It is very unclear to us as what does this body called PASA in terms of the powers they have? Because it seems like they are the ones now who are negotiating. It seems like they are the ones who are regulating everything. It seems like they are the ones who are given powers now to officiate things that should be initiated by the portfolio committee or the department of the minerals themselves. They're not doing that. So we don't understand in terms of this body called PASA. It should really be clear of their involvement with this particular bill as to are they stand to benefit anything or not? Also, in Newcastle, there are two companies that have been found to be working in that particular place by the name of Rhino Horn. And now these guys, they were found to be working there. We're not aware where they got their licenses from. We're not aware as to whether the authorities who gave them permission to work there, who they are. However, we found that they are already in operation that side. Now, if we go to converse and ask questions as to who gave them permission to work on that side, we are not getting that. However, the offices are far, if we have to maneuver all the way from Newcastle to Durban. We're not finding joy in that regard as well because we want to be involved as members of the community. Now, the last part will be the part of the environment. The ecosystem in our oceans is going to be destabilized because these multinational companies, when they come to our shores, they bring equipment, they use what is called dynamats. And when they drop those particular dynamats in our oceans, in our seas, they destabilize the ecosystems, our fisheries. Now, the behavior of the fisheries, it becomes problematic because now we know that there are those who benefit from doing fishes in our seas and in our shores. Now, those people are affected if they can't run the coastlines economy appropriately as it's supposed to be done. Now, we are pleading that if those things are not going to be checked properly and we're not going to be given clarity as to how the portfolio committee or the department itself is going to maneuver along those lines, we then we are saying this bill should be rejected. I thank you. I will extend my greetings to the Chairperson and the portfolio committee before us.
Yes, I'm happy to see you all.
It will be appreciated from our part if this bill or rather the proposed bill itself will give us as black people a chance or rather a leeway to be able to participate fully in the value chain of this particular bill. Because we don't find ourselves being subjected to the very same exploitation that had happened previously, where we found that gold that has been extracted in our country is being processed abroad. And when it returns to this country, we find it, it's very expensive. We'll also appreciate if there's a particular percentage that is going to be allocated specifically to us as black people, just to say that in whatever dealings that are going to be happening, but we do have a percentage specifically attached to us. Would also appreciate it if a new company were to be established because we do realize and it's our understanding that all those companies that were established before the year of 1994 are now in a state of collapse. We were unfortunate during the previous years because public hearings were not held like it's being done now in terms of involving us as public members to be able to make our contributions. However, we'd like to extend our thankful greatness to the portfolio committee to afford us an opportunity to come and register our contributions. We also appreciate the fact that it is highlighted in this particular bill that there's going to be a proposed separation when it comes to the mineral department and also this new proposed state entity that is going to specifically deal with the oil and gas extraction so that will give us a proper understanding and a leeway in terms of we want to channel ourselves specifically to the oil extraction, we'll be able to do that without interfering with the minerals.
See you, Bong.
I thank you.
Sorry, you didn't give us your name. You didn't give us your name.
My name is Thula Mukwanasi. I'm coming from Ward 84 at Umlazi.
You reject the bill?
I support the bill, Chairperson.
Good day to all. Good day to one and all in this place.
Shall we have some order to listen to the next speaker?
I am Leila Abraham from KZN Substance Fishing Forum. This bill, is this a government project or is it a foreign country who is what reject of going to come in? How many jobs will be created for our people? The impetation, what about the atmosphere? What about the marine life? Is that going to be destroyed because of few jobs? And the bulk of money which goes to a few until leaves and a dead seabed? What about the marine life, extinct like the dinosaurs? For the greed of money, not worth it. For the greed of money, not worth it. We reject this bill. What is going to happen to thousands of fishermen who live off the ocean? How are they going to survive? What about our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren? They wouldn't even know what a species of fish gonna be. They don't even know what a dolphin gonna be looking like. Thank you very much.
I extend my greetings to the Chairperson in front of us and the whole committee. And I will greet the community inside the hall. My name is Zamogu Lle Mangele. Coming from Ujameeni, White Twenty One. In Devon. I am disappointed about the bill, Chairperson, because it doesn't show that the person aligned with this bill is a communist. The manner in which it ignores the interest of the public. I am saying this, Chairperson, because I feel that too far, too little when it comes to it being offered to those who are indigenous people of this country with minerals that are going to be extracted and learned of their own. I'm registering my concern, Chairperson, simply because this place doesn't seem to be speaking to everyone. Only a few or other individuals that seems to stand to benefit from or out of this bill. Because I can go alone individually as Zamogu and make a deal, say with Shell or BP, to say that this is my offering. If they give me, say, twenty percent out of what we're going to be agreeing on, then I will leave with a twenty percent, a rich individual, but not as a community. Meaning that those who will not be part of that agreement will remain poor.
As I support a Black participation, which, I tell you, in Ushua, it bears twenty-five percent, ten percent. But we need to acknowledge a community participation through AMACOR.
My input would be that I feel that at least thirty percent participation of Black people should be seen as a means and should be recommended opposed to a ten percent proposed by the bill. Because I feel that it's going to benefit individuals only and not to uplift the masses. However, if I'll make a practical example as Zamogu. If I go to Newcastle and ask for an agreement with a multinational company there and they offer me, say, at least twenty percent of what they will be extracting from that particular area, I will be rich, but as an individual, and masses will be left behind, still remain poor. So I would suggest that at least twenty-five percent must be given to Black participants. And then an additional fifteen percent should spaces who are running COOPs so that at least they can also be uplifted. Then I will come back to Petrolam Development Committee.
The committee is a national committee. While now, man, you're having a problem. You go to national committees which are there dealing with such their business or they are taking too long to respond to the people. So it's better to have AMACOMIT that are established, either regionals or provincials, than to have one committee which is a national committee overseen by only a minister or national. Look, who's a Siza, and he can get any, he can spend a naso. He preach when he go and preach when he go among processes of giving AMAC license with petrol and industry. You know, man, we are having a problem with South Coast, where Shell wants to oil or land. Everybody, every time, we're trying to call them, they all consult. Got to handle Shell, and we're going to go to South Coast. A national committee, it's a familiar, you have to run it. Oh, we can, we can do it. See, I tell you, we can AMACOMIT. I'm a regional phases, oh, I'm a provincial phases.
My name is Tumisini Ngobo from White 84. I thank the opportunity granted to me by the committee and also greet the committee and the community at large.
Okay. Ngizokala ngani ngawa lo ten percent. Ogo tige asaz na no bananinchilu tanas bafiga njani wona. Si abantaba miyama ji si soto esat Afrika asewenzu ten percent, sense more than that. So, o draftelebili, o tasepilo ko, sebense ipi formula. And again, o malepili zotene abantu abaminyama tinela esat Afrika sazogutige sitaverse. What about others? Oma iso faga napenakpele. So, as said in loco, wakwezoa belungu, oma be shaimte eto be shaila bonabodo, be shia ngapandle ti. So, nala ngikala ngalo klo ten percent. Nano gutige oma genlo ten percent do unyuga. Aunyuga ngale njelelo kuto wazuka komoteta aban basi esat Afrika as a whole. Nano gutikubwa o government ozo wazogutige abe pambili kuna bi inkampan. Oba already siyazotin kampani apeshe yezo patala.
My first concern, Honorable Chairperson, will be the ten percent that is proposed with this bill. It's not enough. And I'm also questioning the mindset and the logic behind the person who constructed this particular bill. Because in no way can we agree that as black people in this country, we constitute ten percent. I believe that you are more than ten percent as black people in this country. So it does not make sense to me that only ten percent is going to be allocated to. And also, we need to consider that as black people, we are diverse in this country. So our diversity should be taken into account as well. Because when it also says or speaks to black people, it does not give us clear indication as to say how is it going to be shared among these racial groupings. Are we not also doing what the apartheid government did? If we are going to be sidelined people according to racial groupings?
Okay. Ogu nyasi azogutige si Afrika o esat Afrika si dead world country. So, la ma countries oma efika already da seboni lukutu oyela unambiwa esat Afrika. Baso wumba, sakta lukwame tawazu kontrolu tsesu mbileke stela ogu xloza, ulxlozo itin. Zoguzo banamatsuba futige ogutina ages ngawazangi ofaga lapana eboni ni kulu lo ten percent ozo wanda. Eh, siwazuksebenz. So, ngalo kojes sakta lukwene u government kubauyena ozo ba pambili kakul. Si nga undermine wa inkampani zanga pandle ezwenle tu egumnoto wetu. Zi fige zistrelu kutisine oili, zipinde footi ziznngamile ngapesulu kuzo deso strelu kutisizo kwenzinja. Ngoba ba zutbona bayi kona kola, banemali, banawongama resources tina asnowo.
It will be distasteful, Chairperson, if we are going to be told by multinational companies from Europe or any parts of the world that firstly, they've discovered that we have oil and gas in this country. And secondly, they want to tell us how much are they going to give us. And then thirdly, they want to tell us also that after these resources have been extracted in our country, they're going to take them abroad for processing. So what we want, Chairperson, is that we be given a right to process our own resources. Then after that, they can maybe leave with a material that has already been processed. However, if they are going to extract this material in our country and then take them for processing again, we think that will be unfair to us as citizens of this country. They will be exploiting us if they will be doing that. Because they know very well that we don't have the powers to stand against that. So our proposal or my suggestion is that the government should be given powers to be able to say what needs to happen, to be able to chant the way forward in terms of controlling how these multinational companies do their operations.
Ngabong, ngogwame jetragzoe ipigisa le bill apantil igwazuka umeta tinabandu esat Afrika. And again, last week besi lana gwe climate change. Eko zo ayio footlezi inkampanliz edisilule kakulungo monagalo abawenza. En namplajis twasizo pasisa e bill ehzo kipiza u oyela esat Afrika. And we contradicting ourselves or just confusing, I don't know. Ngabong.
From where I'm standing, Chairperson, I would like to register that I am standing to reject this bill. If you remember very well, last week, at least about last week, we were here also debating the issue of climate change. And now, that's also we wanted to reject it because it contributes to polluting our air and our environment. So today we are here when we are now being asked about a bill about this mineral, eh, gas and oil extraction in our country. We believe that they are also responsible of ensuring that our environment is polluted. So if we are saying today we want to speak about this bill or give powers to make sure that this bill works, and we contradicting ourselves when we say climate change is a problem to our country. However, on the other hand, we are speaking of passing the bill that seeks to suggest that oil and gas should be made a law to be extracted in our country. So we reject the bill until such proper amendments are made. I thank you.
Good morning, Chair, and good morning, Members of Parliament.
Subingrela uslalos, please begerelifutige namalungo, eh, Parliament.
And good morning, each and every one of you that are here.
Sibi ngalelegni nanonke, hinkora ngapaga atige heol.
So my name is Desmond Desa. I'm an environmentalist. I live in the shadow of the biggest petrochemical, chemical industry in South Durban.
Kamala mingustezendisa, ngipuma ke lapaga kwezo pegelilo kweze mvelo. Ngisala konaga namgele anisimafrika footi, ngipegelina zogu iinkenga, es pegelina owoke gumuntu wasimingsimafrika.
So, you know, we left our churches, our mosque and our temples this morning because we see this bill as one of the most critical bills if it goes through. So we are here to put our views across about this bill and why we reject the bill completely.
Siyeke ez ningi izin tokesinza njoba usukulu eson tokenamplanjengabe sambele semason duin. Siambile kesa yokonza sense okningi okxulakxuke. Nogoragaske tukusala, osukule namplanjunguzo ngonsa chukensek, osukutigasbeka imbono kwezi tunesa. Ogutikungaani simele nege nokpasiso aga kwalumteto svivinyo.
And I think you've heard a lot about why people reject the bill completely. And so do I, completely reject the bill, and I'll give you the reasons right now.
Yagabango gutige sense zule ngapambili lukutige izi ipike izi zatu. Esenzugutiga abantu bakpiksa ne nokpasiso kwalumteto svivinyo. Namge ngimepa mkuwe nunje, ngizoxo njalo lukutika, anghamsona lumteto svivinyo kwezi zatu zaloko. Zobesekine keseleke mankubeke ngulum.
If we want to address climate change, then this bill should be scrapped.
Manabake onga feeisi, ogutuvenu kukukuwa kukuwa kwezi mosezulu kwezi esenge sihle. Lumteto svivinyo kuti ngakolutige usu uswe onga bekona.
And we know too well in this province that, that people have died in this province. Over five hundred people have been affected with the climate change. And many people have lost their homes, many people have lost their schoolbooks, many people have lost their uniforms because of climate change that has been caused by the petrochemical giants of Shell, BP, Sasol. And they are all over the world. Wherever they go, they destroy.
Siyazogutige esfunezozunasuluna, siku beke ne simusu kukukuwa kwezi mosezulu kwezi es ngalawaleke njalo. Es esbulaleke abantu kabaning, ababalelo ngapesulu kua five hundred. Abantu ke la bo hipiluzabo ez zatu izi kukula ngengaya kukukuwa kwezi mosezulu. Njelage ngalawaleke, oktala izo lezi inkampani kbalopasukwazo ke o BP, o Shell, nabogo o engine. Abahamba ke wongamas, ogore mabe fearlo omazobange nagona. Bafige ju ba moxake yonke iin toku eswe gatega ikon.
This bill has been written in a way to try and fool the public to agree. But I'm glad that I'm here and I'm glad to hear what people have said because they have found out it's going to protect those very old, those very same oil corporations, Shell, BP and all them in their drills, so that if they invest, we cannot stop them from drilling in our ocean because the government will be our responsible international court.
Siya cha bulaleka kulugutige ngimela pambwe namplanjengizwe zonke footi izin teskulu niwe. O sa kwezabe zela ngapambili, bafige babega imbono ya bo. Ogungcha bisawo lukutige nabo bakonda gaale, okbaleka, okpigi sa lumteto svivinyo. Ngoba kalo lumteto svivinyo kwezi uzosukundezela aiko iin toku entle, o si zela na yo. Labasinkampani kene kulu okbalopasukwazo ke o Shell, no BP, es kwenza ogyigutizona zifunaki imali. Zogu kala kuto hulmen, ubamsona kene na, zoguzo chukensek, osukutige kubawon hulmen olalala. Oksebenza kwa abantu kabafana nisinkampani singisbalile.
You are talking about oil corporations that are over seventy years old. Shell, BP, Engine, Sasol, all of them. Seventy years, ask yourself, what have they done in this country? Because what we have seen, destruction and chaos and huge unemployment.
Skulumaga lange inkampani, esbalapasukuku yeke o Shell, o Sasol, o BP. Zibalela ke miyage nege eusevenchi oktala, zikona je isebenz. Koda kifana si buzumbu, ziblizi inkampani ke giyo yonke limnyaga yini ez yenzeleke abantu. Ngoba yonke in dao lasamba kono ma zonke in dao la isebenza kona, zi fige zone, sense kwe omkulumunagal.
If we don't, we are contradicting ourselves. If we don't address climate change, the very same corporations in other parts of the world are signing up so that they address climate change. Why are they coming to South Africa to drill for oil and gas, which is going to increase the climate?
Asekonda ages kulumanga akonjungo basi ningsimafrika, oma ngabe setile lumteto svivinyo. Si kutosana ke ngao ke ngoku eknis, ngoba ke ikunso litige lezi inkampani ke zanga pandle. Na zo ke footi, zekonda, okbaleka, lukulu isan, kukukuwa kwezi mosezulu kwezi ogngalawaleke. Yinga nkepo zifunungeena ezwenka zasingsimafrika. Zipinde footi kезo na zizo ba u oyela na yo ke ikes. Okzo pinde footi kutalele ti na inkinga, yoku teki simosezulu, esetu sisitwa leke sesna salaoleke.
If they thought carefully about this bill, firstly, they would have considered that the sea level is rising. They would have considered that we have strong currents. And we know over the years how many ships have gone shipwrecked. Whether it's in Riches Bay where coal ships have cut in half, or whether it's in Durban where ships and containers have sunk in the Durban Harbor.
Oma bebektabangeleke abantu basi ningsimafrika kakul gas, laboga abashala ke ngasokuin. Fana ngabe banhulu azoluanele. Ogutige mnengu monagalohose utaleke le vele, konaga lapaga okuin. Sabala kpasukuku yeke, ukilimala ke kwemkumbi, etwalaga impasa, esebenza konaga okuin. Sabala kpasukuku yeke in dao, njenayoke Richard Speke, kanyere, ubasapaga wasimlatsuze. O isulu kwe use inkinga ngena wo, ngolisa kwa manzige oluanje, okpaga ma kwa manzukolu anje, ogngalawaleke. Kanyere nememo ya efungusa kulekululuku, na yo es inkinga abantu inu ma ke abashali, abashala klesu in dao.
Why do we need this bill when we already, you've said, Chair, that this bill will protect, it'll bring in, the government will have a state oil corporation. But we have, Mossel Bay, Moss Gas, that has run down and has lost a lot of money over the years. And it's got independent shareholders in it as well. So why do we need a bill to provide a company to protect a new company when we have a company in South Africa?
Es na yo inkampani, ningsimafrika lapaa ee azwangi Mossel Bay. Inkampani ke leu si isebenzige la ningsimafrikas katana ke esite. Koda kena yo, ayenza ngagale, ngoba siyazosige iningi imali balala gele. Kuningu futsukenge zigale, kubeyakona ngasowala ngasinkelu abo. Koda kuhulmen, ufuna kuschialo lukutige kuningu inkampani encha, abafunugutu bayake. Ez opiga na footi ngo, lukumbiwa ke pants. Eh, es ngageke inkampani, isti ngo sayo ke si yini. Ngoba felis na yo inkampani, ekuwenzayo ke loko, enga zanga footi kigale, kwenele ngabe na yo, iapewa ngengage. Yesi toku es ngalawaleke, ganga njeni befalekislauleke ngayo kuyona.
And we're fully aware that the oil industry and the drilling will not create jobs in their own documents of Sasol, of any, of Shell. This is a specialist work, specialist job, which we don't have the skills in South Africa. So maybe seven or eight people will be brought from overseas to operate those rigs. We don't have it yet.
Ogu nyage sekonda kala kamllop, njeni abantu basi ningsimafrika, ogutige lemsebenz, noma kwenzi, onema kpusuka lumteto svivinyo. Agionaga in toku elezi luksi zati, njeni abantu basi ningsimafrika. Ez zatu kutigishonjal. Ogutige asnowo pelatina makono, ogwenza lumteto svivinyo. Loko rektrazu guti, ve, lekuzo pinde glando ke footi abantu, ngapeshe ya kwe iluanje, kweiwo nage abazokona nage ngo. Nogwenzo akolo lumteto svivinyo, ngoba bana makono ke anne lo noluazi, lukutu lumteto svivinyo wenzu akanjal. So, oma ngabe twa lumteto svivinyo, sisa ke ti na, kutiswa lamatsu lumteto svivinyo. Loko aklo nanese, eknis, ngoba siyazosige, basi ngano makono je, kushuti ngage sebe ngene yeke, yokuwenzo akolo lumteto svivinyo.
And if we want to talk about that the oil companies want to do something for the country, while since nineteen ninety-four, they have got certain elites that have got shares in those companies that don't represent the communities or the people that live in this country or in this city.
Snalo ke footi kuluazu, lukuslentoka ekalu wenzeka. Sukuleni nyage nka nineteen ninety-four, bakonaga vele la bo abasimazinga ngapesulu. Ebbe stula ke beba ingene yeke, yalezi inkontilega. Gora kena bo, abagasa bebasize, abasimazinga ngapants. Jongo ba ke footi kukulu ngalo lumteto svivinyo kwenji, kusasopeka footi abantu inika bafana yo. Ogusho lukutige la bo, ababesa ngasizarala ngitkalin. Baso tukubeka footi, bapindebe ngasizarali. Kupindekneke zue la bo, ababesa bezulele vele, kusukule nyage nka nineteen ninety-four.
And I can't understand why we are shifting the responsibility, Petroleum Association of South Africa, for them to be referee and player. They have failed in their oversight. If you look at the refineries in Durban, or in Cape Town, or in Total, or in Sasol Bar, they're in a mess. What role do they play in oversight because they've done nothing? In fact, people have complained bitterly that the Petroleum Association has failed, not only in the mining, but also in the oil refineries. Yeah, can you imagine how they're going to run, how they're going to manage the drilling?
Kupindekutige, kusukuma ngasaka kulugutige, ogungani, hulmen. Efuna kubakenge njumbanu, kanyere kumbeki imenu, lapaga lewa abapetse. Ngasowala ngosinke lokuwenzo, wakwa kumteto svivinyo, lo, wokikuzo kwa wela wosoluanele, kana, kanyere na yo ke ikes. Kungani kufi kubeyibona ba shawumteto, kupinde footi kubeyibona abahuande la yo. Kunga bekonu mumtu zoguzo chukensek, osukutige bona bayakatwa, kuba basi benza nginlela yin. Bakomba ke imenu inkampani ne engine o Shell, inkampani ne engine o Sasol, ne inkampani ke e engine abogo o BP, no engine. Kota ke bona ngasowala ngosinkelu abo, aguko oktaktili, nukulume ga, lukutige, okxulaga ke guabo. Baso, baso konda kanjal, noma baso kondisa kanjal, lukutige, eskatana sisa, kube impumele.
It is clear that what is trying to be created here is similar to what they've done to Eskom. We have a Minister of Enterprise, we have a Minister of the Minerals and Energy, now we have a Minister of Electricity. What is going on? Do we need the same here as well? Three people, when one person could do the work. Or employ workers, more workers and less ministers. That's what we need.
Kukakati kule lumteto svivinyo, lukutige, interkondo ogwenzoa la, hulmen, lukusinje usnekeseke, interfana, lezi si bonile yenzeke lapaga Eskom. Ogu solosi ne ongongoshe ke abataz, kota kabapegelale in toku ayoto ma utu yapega. Snoma ngongoshe okpegelaleke okes, ongongoshe okpegelaleke sinkampanska hulmen, ongongoshe okpegelale kwezo kumbiwa pantsige namanla. Ogu in toku ebukaga ayoto ke eme shoneke am. Ngabe yin toku leyo, es imesele ngokiensa yini na. Kulululhelo olparaniswa lumteto svivinyo, kwezi sungeke zwa. Ngoba, kunga bekneke zwa, matshukumteto svivinyo, abantu inika baningi. Kuno sekta shuke abantu ke ngamunye, bebe ngongoshe beholage eningi imali.
The bill fails completely. It does not address the protection of the commons, of our water resources, of our land, of our soil, of our air. This bill is giving carte blanche to the oil moguls and the minister to do what he wants to do, and the society will pay the price. And that's the weakness of this bill. It gives power to one person, even though it's divided and subsection all over, but it gives power to one person where the bill is not going to help us as a people. And so, like you and my brothers here, they've come up and sister and said, well, we've been fighting wanting to get a bit of this here for years and got nowhere. This is going to be the same thing where people are going to be, where they're going to be pushed from pillar to post. And that's why the bill must reject it completely.
Ogu obingala lumteto svivinyo. Ogu biga kuri ngalo lumteto svivinyo, lukutige, awnekese amanla, abantu inu bomparas, kanyere malungo bomparas. Anga na oka makono no konda, lukutige, bangangena kanjal, sobabe ingene. Yoksebenza kule imboni, gawela na yo ke ikes. Ogusho lukutige vele, ba ngabantaba ngisuktsula lusuklululhelo, ngakosizo ma lasti tige lumteto svivinyo, kwe o paraniswa. Siya opigiisa, sige ka, awa eke pambili kentlobo, ngoba ke, win tlegelele, awa na lusizo, ebantu in, abanga malungo, bomparas. Uzele njuksu usiza ke, abantu bambalu, okbalopasuka kukunya ke ongongoshe. Na la bo, abazobeke ngabanigas, baliso inkampani kene kulu, ezobi solage imali, kule umteto svivinyo. Kota abantu bakitsa basaleke bona besenkinga ngeni kulu, siya bon.
Now, thank you. We, at this point, going to take another round of hands. And we can do that immediately. I would, because we have the ten chairs here, I would immediately take the five from this side, five from this side, so that we can get progress. I see the gentleman there, one, two, three. One, two, three, and four. Because you are five, see, just, the, right. Can we have yourself with the cap, sir? And then the gentleman, the lady there, yes, yourself with the pen in hand. The gentleman with the tracksuit, is it navy blue? Yes. And the gentleman here. Are we, does it add up to the ten? Is it more than ten? All right, in the next round, I will start by yourself, sir. Now you have, you have seen how the first group of people who contributed dealt with time. You know, normally, when we go towards the end, people will start leaving and so on. So let us just be considerate of time. I'm not as generous as the chair with the five minutes. I'm going to limit it to not more than three minutes so that we can all have a way of participating in this important issue at hand. So you can proceed.
Zogu kala lukutige esnekeseke, eska tige, esenge kosininga kul, neza tso lukutige esbaningi, esfunubeke imbono. Oma ngabe kulumu, kaba ngela, basi mba waku. Ogu tige, eska tisngalile kakul, ngoba abantu bayba pumeke, olo, tso lukutige, awmsteto svivinyo, senze kenele. Zogu kala, eska tis esbeke lapaga eimsuzu, nege emtatu, sengaluleke loko, siya bon, asengakalaba.
Sanbonani.
Greetings.
Ngizobingela, eh, Parliament, eh, la wezongbewa. Lo kulayo o somkanda, eh, waguboga baboake le Newcastle.
I will greet the portfolio committee before us today. My name is Somkanda and I'm coming from Newcastle.
Let me interrupt you, sorry. The noise levels are getting higher. People say when you start getting tired, the noise levels goes up. So can we just respect, so that we can get the audio very, very well for purposes of discussing further?
Zogu kala ngaje, bawe esutseleseka ngane, kulumu, zozwa zuzwa lo, baba opamboye, lukutige, ubega eutin.
Ngabakolsel. Lo kulumala o somkanda, waguboga baboake, oktu awonti, ni le Newcastle. Ngingapansige, sisonke organization, Environment Justice Network.
I would like to apologize on that behalf, Honorable Chairperson. My name is Somkanda. I am coming from Newcastle under the organization.
Sisonke organization, eh, Environment Justice Network.
Eh, sisonke environmental organization.
Environment.
Environment.
Justice Network.
Justice Network, thank you.
Ngabong ngaba ba, ngzalukshaje, amaka le lumtapa be mabili. Eh, ngeso uliska, ngoba besenlulekiwe. Eh, la bafu etu, eh, nginenkinga yuruti, sisonke masboga. Eh, la uhulmeni, lumteto webil, usha elo bani. Uvila apilo tumteto, eskamua tinase sfunzo ngao, es ngawazi. Eskanyo asektuwa dihozani, sizon chena. Katle katle tinazochelu atina. Sifana jengabantu abaki chelu, noma abakokoshelu, eh, ezwenla bo. Ngoba tinase sesezwenle itula. Kotwa, uhulmena rana ndavanati. Uslanganana ma zo ngapandle, ezosichela. Ayu kutezokamueti, bafu etu, azben kaba ngowenzu guti. Ukamura zochena, ngente si konavele. Kushuti walohulme lu okonala, upatelu tumteto. Indota, eh, ngzoebeke jenge ti, aaksin dota, ngasumundu eslis. Ngoba awkwa zukzochena abanba peshe ya, bekchenezwenla kutinzani, uyafunzoa. Yonke entesi cheno, ay kameba zo na peshe. Jova ngengezuzo kwe eteti, eh, iikona, 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 iinji namsho, isi ta isiwe, ngokbona wake peshe ya. Kushuti wa tinase tingsiwe, amanla.
It's concerning, Honorable Chairperson, when it comes to a bill of this nature. Because it does seem to me as if a decision has already been taken as to what is going to happen about the bill. So the only thing that is happening here today is a formality to say to us that at least you've came to consult with us. But I don't think any meaningful contribution from our part can do anything. It does not even seem that our government is a genuine party to us simply because the decisions are not made by the government. By the look of things, they are made elsewhere by those multinational companies abroad in Europe. And this government is then being told what to do. It's been told how to treat its people. So we don't feel represented and we have a problem with that because this is our country, this is our land, and we must have a say in what happens in our land.
Ngabong amshoni, shaw, ingilozisozwe kihame. Minangumundu asema ka opambanesi inkunangi. Ngalukshaya ngelchule, ngoba pela yaitu ali, kisogel nganase. Ha, indechlu paola, eh, ayoto, eh, nina, bawe zulelpesulu. Eh, Parliament delukulu, bakul nina bafu etu. Kotwa, angazoma ngelchlu pantina ngati, ngalowetula. Ngoba, manabenge ngatangpega maniti, no tatu oyilolu anje. Kushuti nina nanda banemvelo. Ogu, eh, ofishba apela, bassisa nganti na mavesolu anje, ngale, ogutisbale. Lezi lorasane esolu anje, kushuti ngaje vele, in dabayazo, aina ndaba. Kasikatle, ezwen yuhulmen yalbulan. Jongo be ngananda banati. Iinga kongeti, umundu eslis, indota ngage vume, ukzoshayla ma nyama tutezwenla. Gena imali, yachlu pa nginda ba imali, ngobe iipetizwe. Ngoba bantu aksi imali, tinajango sisonke, nama jenge tangi, angivumle ndabale pile zo kwenzoana. Kuzo liwi imali je, eh, yetu, yentela. Ngabe siyala, kupulera ma tu bemsebenz. Simoshi iska tetes garasozala la. Ngobe inkulumo sese itola grupi, kuma social media. Kota tinasneemai ninmo abangale ngagi ti, eh, kipila, klabalibisi, ander side call. Kota aska sisi ne isko, lezi kreni esolomitale, asizarala ngaluto. Abantu bakitwa mahambo pege le maswenagi ti, abaningi abantu abasibenzwa bambenzi. Kotu egumnotu etu yata tusiwa peshe, umbuzo amoto aga hulmen. Ma abo hutu wenu nenda banati. Uge wezano ne Newcastle. Jova kuneemai, sinayo tinifa mashol. In ndawenku le ngakonti khoste, izi hoste ngisha bantu, abaseklale. Eh, ngalewa setawi. Ogu ay chlu pa nukzosbona tinangale. Eh, sentrina ge, amshoni shawami, eh, ngoba ngia, ngia klaban ngalula. La, ngiyakela slalo, opi, usi ambili. Angikora lema ngambuni. Kota benfi sa iswele ento. Ngoba, senxa iyoktrina ngri manje. Sinenkinga imai na baybisi future call ngale ngagi ti. If future call imai ngingi, eh, engakbeka ngokso bala, eh, ngzatralu kuti, o, ay tritutlalo. Ngzatralu tayvali. Agayvalu tlalo, ngoba, iisholo yona, yatikxulekiile. Kotwa, ubano urakavoni, len dota angapa, yangapetla. Angfunu kushutu, koti, kondota angapa ngel. Ay funu kzoifala leemai. Ngana, uxlulekiile, oktrina isocialenle pa plain, got twenty nineteen to twenty-three. Imtritileke le onto le. Bestela, leemai le maszon lae, la ma ofira jen Newcastle, uyanga sempo ndecheli.
Yeah, boy. Honorable Chairperson, it is concerning on our part.
Order, let's hear the interpretation.
Thank you, Chairperson. It is concerning on our part, Honorable Chairperson, the understanding is that this bill does not seek to benefit us in any way. We don't see any benefits that is going to come out of this bill. We have quite a few concerns out of the bill, Honorable Chairperson. The first one is that we do have a mine called Future Mine, a future coal in Newcastle. It is not fully operational, Honorable Chairperson. What we are expecting out of that particular mine is for it to be shut down completely and to be closed, because it's not assisting our people. They've already declared themselves that the mine has failed to produce what they've promised to produce. So they've not benefited our people, and also that mine has failed. It should be collapsed, and that call for collapsing of that particular mine should come from the Honorable Chairperson. So we are saying, Chair, you must go to Newcastle yourself, and you must collapse that mine yourself, because you are coming to us with this proposed bill. We are calling it a proposed bill. However, we do not believe it is a proposed bill. We believe that it's already been signed or it has already been agreed amongst yourselves as to what the decisions are going to be. We do have an trust coal. This is a mine that is operating in the north of KZN as well. They are working that side, producing coal. However, they're not getting the support that they should be getting. We are the people of this land in the north of KZN. We are not receiving any attention from the part of the government. There is no assistance. We are also concerned about the environment when it comes to the ecosystem, that destabilization that is going to be happening in our oceans. We know and understand fully well that people who are living along the coast do have an economy that they've established for themselves along the coast through fisheries. Now, what is going to happen to the ecosystem itself? What is going to happen with those fishes in those waters there? Now, if they get extinct or they die, how is the economy of the coastline is going to be? How is the government going to ensure that the economy of the coastline exists and does not seek to be collapsed by these activities? The multinational companies come and tell our governments what to do. They give directives straight to our government, and our government doesn't seem to be independent when it comes to decision-making. That is concerning, Honorable Chairperson, because it doesn't seem that we have a president who's concerned about us. It doesn't seem that we have a president who's got guts, who knows how to take a stand and speak on behalf of South Africans. We only have a government or rather a president who's easily swayed by the multinational companies for money gains, which is not going to establish any sort of assistance or bring any source of employment or any benefits to the people on the ground. So we are saying we reject this bill with all contempt that it deserves. Until such time, that the portfolio committee comes to us with a proper articulated bill that speaks to the needs and the interest of our people. I thank you.
We commit support staff to the parliament.
I would like to take the opportunity to greet the portfolio committee, the members of parliament, and the Honorable Chairperson. Though I'm not seeing him at front. My name is Oyana Matunduluan. I come from Kwama Shu, Ward 21.
I fully support the bill, but I want to add the following things to it.
I want to state on my first opening line that I do support the bill. However, I would like the following additions to be made on the bill.
Maybe also, I just want to add that my views represent my thought and no lobby. One, I'm worried about the DMRi only proposing 10% for local businesses. Menangbonengazu 40% is what local businesses should get. 51% must be contributed by the state and 9% for other entities. I'm afraid about the capitalization of the ventures that must take part in this new law. The bill is silent on government funding. I want to propose that DMRi must play a larger role in the financing of the upstream petroleum bill, not to leave us to the high Nas or Shell, Total, and Abokaltex. I fully support the establishment of a separate petroleum state-owned company. This company will respond to the new emerging problems of this sector, i.e. the ballooning oil prices, and an agency that will look at the petroleum price every time there are seismic changes in the market. The bill, Inga Sab, it must point out explicitly the role that will be played by the foreign conglomerate. I mean BP, Shell, Total Energies. Their role must be reduced or limited to imparting of skills. The bill is an important one. It opens up the sector to new players, especially the previously disadvantaged, thereby ensuring transformation in the petroleum sector. Senklala Pan, senklatu opportunity, we want to give portfolio committee on two points. One, for allowing public participation of this bill and commenting on the bill from the Plush Offices of Parliament. But two, I want to thank you, Honorable Chairperson, for your visibility and the extensive work you do right around the country.
In my closing remarks, I would like to thank the portfolio committee for presenting themselves before us and also affording us an opportunity to contribute and give accounts on this particular bill, and also to ensure that not only those who are in higher structures are beneficiaries of such information will also stand to benefit to know what is happening in the portfolio committee and also in parliament itself. So I thank you. My name is Noctula Shibe. I come from Ward 85. I reject the bill. The reason why I'm saying I'm objecting this bill is simply because we've been told quite many times about the same thing, mines being established, however, job opportunities are non-existent. I'm also objecting, Honorable Chairperson, the separation that the bill is proposing in terms of oil and gas being extracted separately from the mineral department that we know of. And secondly, Chairperson, we know that there are infighting amongst or within government departments themselves. So if they don't agree among themselves on what should be done, how are they going to then have a consensus? Or how are they going to reach a consensus on this particular bill, Chairperson? It would have made sense, Chairperson, if the first point of departure was to send our youth abroad in order for them to regain those skills that are going to be required in those particular working industries. Simply because if we don't have the necessary skills as the youth, what is going to happen is that these multinational companies are going to bring their own people from their own places. And then what is going to happen is that our youth, they are going to end up not being employed simply because they lack skills to qualify for those particular jobs. I'm also against the activities that are being proposed by the bill itself that seeks to speak to the oil and gas being extracted in our oceans. As Zulu people, we know that there are rituals or rather traditional rituals that we perform along the coast of KZN. And that may also be in conflict to what we believe as a nation. If such things happen into our seas, we don't know what type of contamination that may happen in our coastlines and in our oceans that then may affect the manner in which we do and run our rituals. I am also objecting to the proposed bill that seeks to suggest that government must also have a certain percentage of ownership when it comes to the company itself that is going to be running the activities of extracting this oil and gas in our seas or rather in our oceans, simply because of corruption. All the cases that are in our courts speaks to the corruption that are involved, that involves the government. So I'm against the government being afforded powers to run this entity simply because of high levels of corruption. Thank you. I'm rejecting the bill.
Sanborn.
Greetings, you all. My name is Temba. I'm coming from Newcastle. I would like to greet the Chairperson of the House and also the member of the portfolio committee. Last week, we were in this particular venue, and the business of the day was on climate change. And we rejected that particular bill. However, it pains my heart that today we are here again on the similar bill being proposed to us. Again, there was a Just Energy Transition bill that was proposed. How then, we went there also, and we rejected that bill again. We've rejected... We have rejected the two proposed bills, as I've already mentioned before, you Honorable Chairperson. However, today, we are finding ourselves having a third bill that is now being proposed to us. Now, I have a very burning question to say. Exactly who is pushing the government behind to come and shove such bills down our throats? There is a clause, Honorable Chairperson, that is enshrined in our constitution as amended of 1996 that speaks to the rights of South Africans. However, we are finding it difficult, Chairperson, to understand these bills that are now being recommended by the government to us or rather that the government wants us to fully participate on when we know that there is a gap in terms of that particular right that was enshrined in our constitution that speaks to the rights of the residents of this country that does not seek to be getting attention from the government to say that these things that were the agreements enshrined in our constitution should also be followed up the same way in which the government is doing with these bills. I am concerned, Honorable Chairperson, very much concerned, simply because what you came here to do today does not seek to speak to us as people of this country. It does seem to be only the interest of the elite. I will make a practical example, that being the fact that there is an age restriction in this country that speaks to those who are from 18 years to the age of 35. Now, those are the only people who are accommodated in this country. However, if I am 35 and above, where should I go in this country? Because it does seem that I'm not accommodated, and nobody cares about my interests and what should happen to me. My other concern, Honorable Chairperson, is the fact that... My other concern, Honorable Chairperson, is the fact that we know very well that in these proceedings, there are those who are only interested in controlling the cameras. So, we know that there are clips and particular footages that are not going to be appearing, Honorable Chairperson, on those rolling cameras simply because it does not suit the narrative of those who are behind or rather supporting this particular project. Now, we are against that. As I'm speaking before you today, I want to register it on record that I'm aware that some of the clips will be removed because I believe those clips will not be speaking to what the elite wants to hear.
So, that is, as you wrap up, you remember about the three minutes. I'm not referring to the skip clip.
It's only three minutes left now.
No, no, I'm saying as you, as you wrap up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm also concerned, Honorable Chairperson, of the fact that as a mere citizen of this country, as a mere citizen of this country, our rights, they don't seem to be equated to those who are seen as to be the elite. I am simply saying this because if I'm found, for example, to have stolen...
Let's, let's, we would want to hear what is coming through from the submission, please.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'll make a practical example. If I'm found as a mere citizen of this country to have stolen an egg, I will be taken into custody and I will be locked up for at least a period of five years. But it doesn't happen with state officials. And it is concerning because it does look like there is protection among those who are known as the elite and they protect one another. They does not want their corruption or their dealings to come to the public. Now, that should be something that the government should fix because we want transparency. We want the government also to be held accountable and for the government to do what is right in line as to what we expect as the members of the public.
How come you become a president whereby you killed the 42 people for the mine workers? Go 2012. At the very same time, who president?
Order, 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 let's hear the interpretation so that we make sure that it gets into the bill.
It's concerning, Honorable Chairperson, to know that currently in parliament, we have a president, a president that we don't believe that should be in the Union Building simply because that particular president has killed at least about 40 people in the mining industry. That we know for a fact. And we also know, Honorable Chairperson, that the fact that those mine workers were protesting and asking for an increment of their salaries by 12%, however, they were not given that particular 12%, Honorable Chairperson, they were killed. So, we are saying that the president, the sitting president, is not a legit president to be sitting in Union Buildings. We therefore ask that at least something be done about that particular president because we feel that the state and the government as a whole is selling us out as the citizens of this country and we're not happy about that. I thank you.
As you start the leadership, we understand, we said, because it is a public meeting, we are going to register everything that you say. We don't want to cut and paste and so on. It's unfortunate that at this time, I would ask you not to disappoint me in as far as time is concerned. So that you zoom into the actual bill. Don't miss the opportunity to zoom into the actual bill so that we get what you have to say. We are still going to other places where they will have input and you might have missed a golden opportunity to get your input about exact clauses and so on which you would want to see or not to see or to reject or not to reject on the bill. So, you can go through, sir. Thank you for the opportunity, sir. My name is P. Webtelis from Ward 16. I'm from a private company. A G T company. I will skip the issue of Nature H Group and the Mbalanga issue. May I highlight, Chairperson, that we understand, we're cognizant of the fact that parliament is there, but I feel like we are being asked to wrap up something that is already in motion. My thinking was that when parliament comes to us, they should be coming with the researchers that informed the creation of this bill. So that when we engage, we engage properly with the creators. Because now, I think like it's already in motion, our inputs won't matter that much. My thinking was that as soon as the oil and the gas has been discovered, as part and passes of the research, we as the people of Eteguine should have been engaged. My observation is that many a times you find bills presented to us in this manner and they look so good when they are presented to us. But when it's implementation time, we are excluded and we're told of a lot of clauses and then some policies which are red tape and that actually alienates us. I think for us to make a meaningful contribution on this bill, we should have been told of the advantages and the disadvantages. We should have been told of the consequences so that we make an informed decision in our submissions. Mine is that we should have started fixing the petroleum challenges that we have as a country right now before adding another project or another baby that will need its own attention. But we should be fixing what challenges that we have at this point in time. As I said earlier, we have a lot of problems that we aren't dealing with. For instance, the price of fuel, the price of petrol in our country is very high. There's a lot of countries, our neighboring countries, who buy petrol for us, that we supply fuel to. Their litter is far lesser than ours. So, those things are not being addressed. We should be fixing that first.